I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a public statement tonight? All right, then we're going to move right along. So for our reports and presentations, my correspondence, I have a few pieces of correspondence from MASC, the Massachusetts Association for School Committees. The first is that the MASC Day on the Hill is coming up. We all got probably a card in the mail. The Day on the Hill is a, I'll just read the little blurb for everyone to know. It's a key legislative and education leaders will present an informative advocacy action session that will address the fiscal challenges districts in the state are facing, why these are happening, and how school leaders can best prepare for fiscal year 26 and the future. So it's a great opportunity to meet with people that make the decisions. So if anyone would like to join, Addie, I believe Addie is welcome to join this as well. If you're interested, you obviously don't have to, it's a school day. But it's Tuesday, May 6th, and you do have to register to attend. So I think Donnell and I talked about going, so I think that we-
I'm going to go too.
Are you? Okay, great. So I think it's good to go and get to talk to people about some of our fiscal challenges. Okay, and then the next piece of correspondence from MASC was just the bulletin. There are a couple things in the bulletin that I just thought were pertinent. So we have a new field director for our area. Jim Hardy has retired, so we have Sean Costello, so welcome to Sean Costello. So in case we have any questions or need any assistance, we will contact Sean Costello. I also want to give a little shout out to Chris, because he is ahead of the game, because there's also a little blurb in here about MASC starting to develop an artificial intelligence policy. Chris already developed one.
I believe we approved it last month?
I'm sure it is. So we're ahead of them, so great job.
Thank you.
And then the next is just, you've also probably received nomination forms for life members, the All-State School Committee Administrative Assistant of the Year, and then there's information about new resolution forms. Here, the packet, thank you. Okay. That's all for my correspondence. Student advisory report. Addie?
Hi.
Hi.
So there was a lot going on at the high school this month, so I decided not to really just focus on one thing. So I have a couple different topics I want to talk about just because there's so many great things I want to highlight. So first off, we had our Bourne High School DECA attend states, and so those are all the members that attended states. And I'm sure next month we'll be able to get some of the members that are going to the international conference to come talk about it. So yeah, excellent. And so we actually had some of our students that were recognized at the DECA competition. So Josiah D'Souza was a state finalist in the financial consulting event, and Dion Patel was a state finalist in the retail merchandising series. And seniors Muskaan Patel and Alexandra Stowe are actually qualified for competition at ICDC, which is the international competition they're all going to next month. And so we actually have a bunch of members going to ICDC. It's going to be held in Orlando, Florida. And so again, Muskaan and Alexandra are competing. And then we also have a bunch of students attending a leadership academy. And so they're going to learn how to become better leaders within both their DECA chapter and hopefully just see what other DECA chapters are doing and learn how to just be better for next year for the competitions. I think this is a great opportunity for our students, and I don't think I've seen a lot of cross-country trips in a while, so I think this is really exciting for our school. It's just a great opportunity. It's great that we have so many students going to it. Next up, we had a really cool fair at the high schools. We had the Credit for Life Fair, I believe it's our third year doing this. And so we had all of the juniors meet with some people from a local bank, and they talked about different financial responsibilities, such as how to finance a home, how to use a credit card, learning about your credit score. And so there's just a bunch of different simulations catered at helping students understand financial responsibility. I think especially it's such a good time to start teaching kids about that. And I know last year when I participated in it, it was a really great learning experience, and there was a lot of things I didn't know. And so, yes, students participated in this last week. And yeah, here's some of the students listening to a member of a local bank. I'm not sure who the bank came and talked to them, but I know that they had people from the bank come and talk to them about, again, those things. And so we had firsthand experience, and yeah. Cape Cod Five, thank you. And then finally, just on Monday, we had our Knock Down Hunger event, which has been about a month in the making. So the National Honor Society collected over 1,000 boxes, both from the high school and all the other schools helped collect these 1,000 boxes. And we had some team leaders reach out to all the schools and help coordinate all of this. And so, yeah, we were able to donate all of these boxes to the local Damian's Food Pantry. And so this has been very successful. And so, yeah, if you can click on the link there, there's actually a video we put together. Here, we'll spiel at the beginning again. And you have a fun president of the National Honor Society of Bourne High School. On behalf of the membership, I want to thank the Bourne School community for supporting our service project, Knock Down Hunger. We surpassed our goal of 1,000 boxes and will donate all of them to the Bourne Food Pantry. Thank you. And so we set up a chain around the whole school, and we knocked down 1,000 boxes. I actually don't think we used 1,000 boxes in the chain. I think we only used probably 800 of them, because we couldn't fit all the boxes. But yeah, all of the students from the high school came down and watched this. We wanted to go with the full district involved, but it just was too much to do within the high school. But hopefully we can expand this next year. And we actually sent out this video to a lot of different National Honor Societies in the state and challenged other National Honor Societies to do the same challenge. And yeah, we just hope we're going to start a chain of Knocking Down Hunger, just a domino chain, which is really exciting to do. As you can see, it's pretty long, it lasted from the building staircase into the gym. And there were only a couple hiccups along the way. It mostly went down itself. Getting there.
Needs a little encouragement.
I told Miss Jordan to kind of try to cut out the parts where you have to kick it down, but guess she didn't. And then, yeah, at the end, we, most of the school is in the gym at the end. We set up this really cool spot, as you'll see in a minute.
Who set it all up?
National Honor Society. So I worked, yeah. I worked on the spiral, we're getting there. Yep. Yeah, so it took us about an hour to set up, because there were just so many boxes.
Wow.
So we actually got the idea from, we saw another challenge on Instagram. This elementary school had collected cereal boxes and did a similar thing, but they did it on a much larger, I mean, much smaller scale. And we wanted to expand it to more than just cereal boxes, because we also didn't want to donate 1,000 cereal boxes to the food pantry. And yeah, so in a bottom, I was, we collected this many boxes, which is crazy. Yeah.
That's great, very nice.
So now we just have to figure out how to get all the boxes to the food pantry. And now that I'm thinking about it, it was the, it was the Bourne Food Pantry, not Damian's Food Pantry, I'm thinking a different one. So Bourne Food Pantry is.
That's great.
And so we hope to inspire other schools to do the same, so just a little point of that. And then last, I was asked to give a theater update. So unfortunately, BHS hosted the preliminary round of the MAT Drama Festival, as we do every year, but they didn't progress. Students did win a number of awards in acting and scenic design and other technical elements. And now the production of SpongeBob Musical is in full swing. So we'll give updates on that in a month. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Addie?
Okay. Great presentation.
Yeah, it's wonderful. All right, so Dr. Joe?
All right, thank you. So although many of you probably saw the email, because you're all on the staff email, I do want to, with a flourish and excitement, tell you who our new assistant superintendent is. So she's here tonight. We all know and love her, but I'd like to officially announce that Christine Mourning has been named our new assistant superintendent. We'll have to respond in a minute.
Her best reaction's so bad, yes.
So not everyone knew Jessi, I said, that's great. We do have a press release ready to go out, it's in your folder. But I do want to highlight a few things. For those who don't know Christine, I think many of you do, she began here at, she's been the principal of Bourne Middle School since 2018. She has been with Bourne for over 20 years, and has experience in other districts as well, and at the college level. So many of that is in music or the arts, which you know is a passion of mine. But also, she's become, at the time I've been here five years, a really amazing leader in academics, in MTSS, and you name it. Christine is so extremely well-rounded. And as our search committee folks will tell you, many of whom here were on that, at every level, she continued to rise above the other candidates. So I was really pleased when I saw her as one of the two finalists. Jordan and I did the final interviews, and it was no question. So we're really excited to bring her on. She'll be in this chair next month, because next week she'll start her transition. And as the press release will say, we've asked her to stay on as the principal at Bourne Middle School to finish out the school year while she transitions into the assistant superintendency. So even though it's a hard shoes to fill in both places, we know that she can do it, and all of us at Central Office will be filling some of those assistant superintendent duties so that it's not a task that's just impossible for her to do. So would you like to give a few words?
No, you're good, thank you so much. I'm very excited about it, very really happy to be taking this transition, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
She knows she'll be saying a lot of her words in about a month, so fantastic. Great, so the next very exciting thing, it's been a long time in the making, and I'm really excited to present to you our draft strategic plan. So I'll go through the whole slide deck, which is really just the plan in slides. Tonight, I'm asking for your approval to officially approve all of the text, all of the words. Once you do that, it'll be sent to the graphic designer, and then they'll really beautify it. Graphics with, you know, maybe images of bridges. I mean, we'll see what she comes up with, we'll approve that as well, but that's probably about a month from now. So tonight, I really hope that you'll really think deeply about all of the work that was put into this. And then at the very end, we have some of our members here, they'd like to give some reflections on the process. So I do hope that many of you tonight will take that opportunity. Some have already told me, yes, I will definitely speak, and others I won't put on the spot, but I hope that you'll hear from them. So without further ado, and I do want to thank you all for, you know, the updates all along the way and for your involvement. So our strategic plan is developed in the frame. And this is just the text, it will look much better when it's done. It will take us through the next five years, so 2025 to 2030. It feels like it's pretty far away, but actually it's only five years from now. We decided in total that our slogan, we didn't need another slogan. We were so pleased with our vision here, that we were putting that front and center. So inspired to learn, empowered to explore, prepared to act. Basically, this is what we envision for each of our students, and also what we want to emulate in our staff. Anything in red will be changed for the final version, so obviously all of the numbers will be red. I'd like to take a moment to read this, I know it's very small on the screen, and you know I often don't read, I kind of speak off the cuff, but I think a lot of what's in here is important, so if you would indulge me for a minute. I made it big enough where I don't think any of my readers. So this will be the letter, that will be kind of at the front of it, that explains the process. It's with great enthusiasm that I present the Bourne Public Schools 2025-2030 Strategic Plan, a vision that charts our course for the next five years. As a coastal community, our identity as canalmen is rooted in the proud tradition of guiding ships safely through the Cape Cod Canal. In much the same way, this plan serves as our navigational chart, steering us toward a future of excellence for our students, schools, and community. At the honor of taking the helm of Bourne Public Schools on March 2nd, 2020, just as the world was on the cusp of an unprecedented challenge, navigating a school district through a global pandemic tested our resilience, adaptability, and strength as a community. Over the past five years, we've made remarkable progress in enhancing student learning, strengthening our school culture, and fostering meaningful partnerships. As we look ahead, this strategic plan reaffirms our collective commitment to academic excellence and student success. The planning process for this five-year strategic plan began in the winter of 2024 with a district-wide survey, which quickly revealed the need for a comprehensive, community-driven approach. Recognizing the importance of broad input, we partnered with Teaching and Learning Alliance, TLA, to guide us through this work. In the fall, we launched a multi-phase process, beginning with the collection of various data sources to better understand our district's strengths and areas for growth. To ensure diverse perspectives were included, we formed a strategic planning committee, which were made up of educators, administrators, families, and community members. We then saw additional feedback through a community feedback survey, which was completed by nearly 1,000 respondents, we were just shy of 1,000, and followed that with nine focus groups to identify key priorities. Over the course of six rigorous strategic planning meetings, our committee engaged in thoughtful discussion, examined data, and worked collaboratively to craft a plan that truly reflects the needs and aspirations of our students, staff, and community. This process was built on shared commitment to excellence, inclusion, and continuous improvement, and the results are strategic plans structured around four key focus areas that will drive our work forward. You're going to hear about these four focus areas, so I won't read that section right now. While this strategic plan represents the hard work and dedication of 23 individuals working alongside TLA, the real work is yet to come. It will take all of us, educators, students, families, and community members to bring this plan to life. I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to our survey respondents, focus group participants, and especially our strategic planning committee members. Your voices shaped this plan, and your commitment to our students and schools has been invaluable. I am also deeply grateful to our educators, administrators, family, and community partners who continue to support our mission. Each focus area is supported by clear action steps and measurable outcomes to ensure accountability and progress. With this plan as our guide, I'm confident that together we will continue to navigate toward a future of opportunity and success for all Bourne Public School students. I look forward to the journey ahead and to the collective impact we'll make as we bring this plan to life. So thank you for your ongoing support, partnership, and dedication to our students. Hope you can hear the excitement. It really is better than I could have ever imagined. So with that, I'm going to launch into the pieces of our plan. But before I do, I want to name everyone who was part of this process. So unfortunately, our very first member, these are alphabetized by the way, one of our student members, Jackie Battles, her family had moved to Plymouth, and so she actually joined the Plymouth Public Schools during this process. We will miss her greatly, she was an amazing person with great voice too. I would say about four or five of our meetings, she missed the last few. We also had our beloved Donnell Beal, who's here tonight as a school committee member, Christine Mourning, Liz Carpanito, Jessie Clements, Noelle Colbert. We had one of our teachers who's here tonight, Carrie Degowan, Kristin Donahue, another school committee member, Kendall and Gagne. In the parent role, we had Michelle Gary. We also had Jordan Geist. Student JT Luce, he's a senior, he has a baseball game tonight, which I hope that they're winning. I drove by and they look like they're doing pretty well, so he apologized he couldn't make it. Student Lola Lumley, who's here tonight to share her remarks. We had community members, esteemed Peter Meyer, and also later down the list, Amory Serunian, thank you for coming tonight. I hope we can hear from you as well. Chris Oliver, myself, obviously. School committee member Kathleen Quintal. Another fantastic teacher, Angela Rivera. Barbara Starkey was on for all but one meeting. Another fantastic teacher, Amory Strode. And rounding us out was our fourth student member, Alexis Weston, who was an eighth grader. So really great discussion, lots of input, and I'm especially proud of our student members because their voice added so much to this.
I think you skipped over a couple.
Did I?
Yes, that's okay. There were a lot. Lisa McGuire, Lisa Cadaver, and Amory Serunian, I believe.
Oh, I mentioned her with Peter.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure. I was forgetting down the list. Thank you to everyone.
And Lisa McGuire. Did I skip you, Lisa, I'm sorry? All right. This is too small for me to see without reading, so I do apologize. So as many of you know, there were multiple phases. I mentioned that at the beginning. And so basically, it has a lot of input in the phase. It has building the plan and implementing the plan will be our very last phase after you approve this. The building of the plan was somewhat of an iterative process, where we knew we were going here, we thought about something, and then we kind of came back to it. And as the people from TLA said, just trust the process. We did, and I believe it came out pretty great. One thing that I'm personally proud of, and I am going to have to make this a little bigger for my eyes. We really dug in on thinking about who we are as a district. And again, I've been with this district for five years, so I can really say "we" now, but I learned new things about us as well. And it was great to hear from this perspective and that perspective, and, you know, in the context of where we wanted to go, but who we knew we were. So I really appreciated that. So we have a brand-new mission statement. And that mission statement, I'll read it for those who can't see it on there, is really intentional. So together with staff, families, and the community, we empower all students to thrive within a culture of academic excellence in a creative and innovative environment where everyone is safe, respected, and valued. I think the more you read that, the more you see it really speaks to, what is it that we do, who will benefit from our work, and what are the results of our work? It really is our core mission of who we are. So I think you can see some themes through here of who we're doing it with together, who we're doing it for, and the kind of environment that we want to have. And those are really important pieces. All of this discussion didn't come from the 23 people, it came out of the survey results, it came out of the focus groups. And we talked a lot about these. We have brand-new core values. I say brand-new, but it's really a reflection of who we are, and we've re-articulated these things. So after lots of discussion, we decided with an acrostic of the canalmen, we wanted something that even our littlest of canalmen could remember, and we really wanted to keep the fact that we are canalmen. We played with the idea of canal, or Bourne, or some other pieces, and ultimately we said, no, even though it's more words than most districts have, we are Bourne, and we want it to be the canalmen. So our hope is that each of these core values will be something that we explore and develop in schools so that as children go through all the grades, they really get to know them. So it kind of rolls off the lips. So I'll read them out loud. So our core values are, we commit to excellence, we adapt to challenges, we nurture the whole child, we act with accountability, we lead with integrity, we motivate all to reach their full potential, we empower students to think critically and independently, and we navigate through life with purpose and curiosity. Some really interesting things that the TLA folks said they hadn't heard in other places, and we were proud of that. So with that, as I said, we felt we didn't need another slogan. The vision was one of the last things that we all, kind of as a community, agreed to. And it was succinct enough, and it was powerful enough, that we said, this is what we want people to have as a takeaway. That we're inspired to learn, we're empowered to explore, and we're prepared to act. And it was intentionally left open to interpretation. We didn't want to say, you know, what we were going to act and do, because we think that if you feel empowered to act, you're going to do what's right, and you're going to do what's needed. And that's what we want all of our staff to do, all of our students to do. And yeah, I think these are pretty powerful words. A theory of action is more of an academic term, and I really appreciated some of the comments from folks as they looked at it. Actually, it was Donnell who said, you know, couldn't we say, when we create? And, you know, we will. I said, we could say that, because we're aspirational in it, but a theory of action is always an if/then statement. So basically, it's all the things, a collection of it, that we believe will happen. Because if we do these things, these things will happen. And so I'll read that out loud for everyone. So if we create rigorous and relevant learning experiences that support student development, allow students to feel a sense of belonging and social-emotional well-being in school, provide communication methods to consistently engage all families and stakeholder groups, and enhance collaboration between schools, town government, and the community with the goal of creating a joint vision to address school funding, facility issues, staff recruitment, and student retention, then we empower all students to thrive within a culture of academic excellence in a creative and innovative environment where everyone is safe, respected, and valued. I love seeing the head nods, because it's like, yes, yes. This is for the graphic designer, that we, you know, we want to have a theme that's obviously very purple, that, you know, promotes the canalmen, and, you know, really has the canalmen throughout the document. So we're excited to see what she comes up with. Okay, so in the last section, I'll go through each of the focus areas. These focus areas, again, didn't come out of our brains, they came out of all the survey responses, all of the focus groups. And they kind of rose to the top, and then they were culled out as high as priorities, because they had to be doable, actionable. I believe we can do all these things in five years, and probably an awful lot more. But it gives us kind of, it charts a course for us to then develop a plan on a plan. And you'll see that in a few places, like in the plan, we are creating a plan, because, you know, it doesn't go from nothing to something very quickly. So some of these are the seeds, and then the measure of success is the fully implemented plan that will be developed over the course of a few years. So in teaching and learning, again, we are about students. We are about teaching and learning, it's part of our core mission. So the objective is to create rigorous and relevant learning experiences that support student development, prepare students for their futures. And we believe these action steps will get us there. Enhance tier-one instruction, that's what all children have. That's general classroom instruction for all students. And we know that we're on a path to enhance that in so many different ways. That's, that could be the entire plan, right? That could be everything about this plan. So we know there's a lot of work that will go into that, but most of it will include professional development, aligned curriculum, and just the continued work that we're doing around observation and peer observation. We believe people really learn best from other people. So this one is kind of self-explanatory, but just note, this committee especially, we'll hear a lot more about this over the course of the next few years. As part of tier-one instruction, the next two, the next bullet kind of pulls that out a little more, like what do we want to see in our classrooms? And we've already started this journey. We want to see more student ownership and engagement. We want to see that they're really, really owning their learning, because we believe tomorrow's, you know, tomorrow's careers and jobs are going to be independent, creative thinkers that know how to collaborate with each other and know how to be a learner. So it's not so much about what you're learning anymore, because we could Google that. It's really about how you are as a learner and how you are as a person collaborating in society. So we want to see more experiential, real-world learning opportunities. You've seen a lot of that with what we've done with high school, now moving down into our middle schools, career-connected opportunities. And also a lot of student discourse and collaboration. You know, that word discourse, it feels like a heavy word, but it really means our students talking to each other about their learning. Because we know, when you teach another person something, or when you're talking with someone about it, you're learning in that moment so much more than if you were just taking it in. So we wanted to call that out as its own initiative and realize that that's going to take some work and resources and professional development, and we know we can do it, we're already on that path. So the next big focus area is culture and wellness. I do have to say, the TLA group said that they've never seen in survey responses so much reference to kindness, that Bourne Public Schools is a place of kindness, is a place where people feel welcome. They'd never seen that called out so many times. But there's always room for improvement, there's always room, you know, for all of these. And so, you know, that also bubbled up to the surface around culture and wellness. So we want to ensure that all students feel a sense of belonging and social-emotional well-being, while feeling connected to our schools and community. You'll see the word "community" in here a lot, and I'm really thankful for the two community members and the parents that were on this committee, because it came out loud and clear that Bourne Public Schools is about our community. We are our own community, but we are connected to our communities. You see that word come up a lot. So as part of this initiative to enhance climate inclusivity and connection throughout the district, and that's not only for our students, but for our staff, it's been really rough to be an educator in today's day and age. It, you know, everything from recruitment to retention, like we want to make sure that our educators also feel very connected and are feeling, you know, the sense of belonging just as much as our students. We want to implement a comprehensive social and emotional curriculum, and, you know, we have very good pockets of social-emotional learning happening in our health curriculum, in our guidance curriculum, in our own classrooms. We want to articulate that across pre-K through 12+, we want to make sure that it's very connected and comprehensive. So that's a plan that's already in the works, again. None of this is a hard left or right turn. It's kind of a moving forward of a lot of the initiatives that were started five years ago. ago, a deepening of them. And the last one is a really big one that we talked about a lot, to kind of create or promote a district brand. And that sounds kind of like a marketing thing, but we really, through this process, wanted to talk about who we are, to look at our logos, to look at our color schemes, to look at everything from the way we talk about ourselves to the way the community or the greater community talks about us. And so we think that's going to be kind of a comprehensive branding plan, and we think it's going to help a lot. We're going to do more listening to kids and listening to teachers as we try to do that. So the third one is around communication. That came out loud and clear in the surveys. It does come out loud and clear in almost every district strategy, right? Because you can never communicate enough. But as part of that, we really want to look at a cohesive district communication model as the first one, which Chris has done an awful lot of work on already. So you'll see, like, some of these are already kind of in progress. So you'll be seeing soon about a new platform called Parent Square. So I'm going to save the thunder on that, but we've done a lot of research, and it's going to give us a comprehensive, kind of like when we, you know, redid our website, we're going to be able to redo all of our communications in a kind of one-stop shop. It'll be really easy for parents, for students, for teachers. So we're excited about that. So measure of success is to fully implement that. It'll take a little bit of time to get through that. We also want to create a district communication plan, and that's being really intentional about how we communicate, when we communicate, and helping our community understand how to access all those things. So that's going to be part of it as well. And then lastly, this is the big one that we would just want to continue to do. Consistently engage families and community members through written and in-person communication. That's the continuing to deepen our Building Bridges initiative. Re-engaging our alumni network. We know we've got a lot of alumni who live in our community and don't live in our community, and they have so much to offer and give. So again, we really want to re-engage them in a really systematic way. Probably you're systematic a lot because we want to put structures in place that, again, we know when we're engaging, with whom, and how to get that input, build for the future. So lots of great things will come out of communications. And then lastly, and this one kind of went on to the next page because there were so many pieces too. So finance and facilities is a lot. Enhance our collaboration between schools, town government, and the community with the goal of creating a joint vision to address school funding, facility issues, staff recruitment, and student retention. There's a lot of pieces in here. Enrollment's a big piece in this. So you already heard about the first initiative. Thank you for giving me the green light because we're already well on our way for this best use study. We will kind of be in the next phase of this, where we'll be able to re-engage our community and talk a little more about, like, what are the next steps around using our facilities, enrollment, and what have you. So we're pretty excited about that. Create opportunities for expanded pre-K offerings, including universal pre-K. I say "including" because it might not only be universal pre-K. It might be a full-day program. It might be more offerings in different locations. We want to kind of look at all of that comprehensively because we heard that loud and clear from the surveys to really look at that. Continue comprehensive capital improvements. And this is something that, you know, in a closed way, we've done for many years. And I know, Ms. Fuller, you've been part of so many discussions around capital improvement over the years. So, you know, it's not that we're not doing it. We just want to continue it and address other pieces. So, you know, address the aesthetic needs as well as the capital needs. Look at long-term building and replacement and renovation plans. And then what also came up out of our committee was investigating opportunities for in-kind donations of goods and services. Could we have a work party where we're painting all together? And it's fun, and we're getting the job done, and we're not breaking any rules, you know, as possible, you know? Or are there things that the community would like to donate that we could implement right away? So just looking at all these different pieces. And that gets us to the end of it. So for us, it was a little succinct, but I think it says a lot that we're ready to do. And what I'd love to do now is to go into the last few slide deck, part of my slide deck? Let's see. Balance of the Plan. The deck was in there as well. Thank you for letting me flip through because I do want to hear some reflections from our team members. There we go. Okay. So I know that a few of our team members were ready and willing to speak, and I won't bend and, you know, break any arms, but I am hoping that a few folks will come up to the microphone there so you can be heard. Introduce yourself and give us your reflections on the process.
Do you want to start?
Yes, I would like to.
Want to go up to the podium or?
It's your call. You have a mic here, so.
If it's okay if I stay here? Absolutely. So from my point of view, I just felt the whole process from start to finish was extremely collaborative and, as you can see, made up of a variety of stakeholders from, you know, from students, parents, school committee, staff members of different types, teachers, admin. And it was, in my opinion, it was certainly a safe space to share our thoughts and our concerns and our opinions. I certainly learned a lot about the district. I've been here, this is going on my fourth year already. I don't know where time goes. But I certainly still learned a lot about the district and what people, especially through the surveys, what people thought the good, the bad, and the ugly of what we do well and what we need to work on. But at the end of the day, you know, having the larger, I think there was probably a total of eight meetings maybe total.
Yeah, we had a few extras as admin team to prep it and.
Yep. So through the eight meetings and then within those meetings where we had all these members present, we had opportunities where the Teaching and Learning Alliance consultants, they would break us out into smaller groups, and we would vet things out through the smaller groups and have those deeper one-on-one conversations with each other. And I didn't always agree with some people in my small group. They didn't always agree with me. But at the end of the day, we came together and we came up with these goals and some of these visions and the different pieces of the strategic plan. I've been a part of these before in the past. This was, in my opinion, done extremely well. It's just taking in everyone's voices and giving the opportunity to other elected officials in town as well, besides school committee, to be a part of this. So, you know, I'm very hopeful for the next five years as to what we can do and what we can accomplish. And I think, I would say, pretty much 99% of this, I think, is without a doubt possible. So that's, you know, one person's perspective.
Thank you. That's great. I should have made an order. Why don't I call on people that I know said yes? Is that me?
I thought the, as the TLA group, as they helped us through the process, they had said, you know, it's going to seem like we're all over the map, and it really did the first couple of meetings, leaving there and kind of not really understanding or knowing what we just did. But when we went back, you know, they basically kind of put it all together with a bow on and said, this is what you did last meeting. And so then, moving on, I love the collaborative approach. I loved that we had so many stakeholders. Having the students was absolute key. You know, they're the voice of tomorrow, and they really, they really did give a lot of information to us, the good, the bad, the ugly. So it was really, I thought that was one of the best pieces, is having them as part of the team. It is amazing as to how this all came about and how few, it almost seemed in so few meetings how much we actually created. So I am very excited to see what happens going forward. And I think, like Chris said, I think it's doable, and I'm excited to see how it all comes out.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Lola's very brave, and she told me that she would speak. So one of our awesome students.
Okay. I'm Lola. I was one of the students on the Strategic Planning Committee. I was very honored to be chosen. It was a really cool experience. We worked really hard over, like, a lot of months, a lot of meetings, doing a lot of talking about what we wanted to see in our school. I think that between the students, teachers, community members, parents, we had a lot of really good input, and the ideas were very helpful, and I'm very excited to see those implemented in the next five years.
Thank you, Lola. I appreciate you. Do I see Noel?
I'm ready to get.
Wait.
Obviously not tall of him.
So for me, I came in, as I sometimes come to the meetings, with fresh eyes, being new to the district, even though it's April and blows my mind that the year is coming to that end. And like Chris, I have been part of strategic planning committees in other districts, and I have to say, I echo, the collaboration for me was amazing, from students to teachers to administration, to school committee members, to town officials. Being new, I don't know everybody, and I was able to hear the different aspects of the school and not have had the students that were represented was really, really cool. I had, just as a personal standpoint, I had one opportunity to speak with Ann Marie and the gentleman from the high school, who just coincidentally, his mom works with my husband in Sandwich. So I was discussing it, and he made the connection, and then she made the connection, and then made the connection to Ann Marie when he was here to give the jacket. So it really kind of wrapped around what, to me, Bourne represents. And that whole process, it kept coming back to that. There's one particular meeting that although there was a particular agenda, it went off the agenda because the conversation was so town-based, and you could hear the heart of every member that was there and what is, you know, what they thought was in the best interest for not only the students but the staff and the community moving Bourne forward. And it was really nice just to be able to sit back and listen to that because, you know, again, being new, I was kind of the outside looking in. As an administrator, I will say, I have never seen a process so thoughtful as far as a strategic plan, from the beginning of the surveys through all the meetings. And sometimes I even left thinking, where is this going? And I know what it looks like in the end, but the two facilitators really did an amazing job pulling all of their thoughts together in the different breakout groups, having us discuss them, and then coming really with one voice and keeping in the forefront of our minds, you know, what our goals are, which is the students and the community of Bourne. And it was truly, it was a remarkable experience, I have to say, to be part of. So thank you all.
So no one else explicitly told me they were excited to speak, but I do hope a few other folks might indulge me and say a few words. We were so grateful that both of these, of the select and select people.
Thank you.
Came to us because.
We're the ones who are truly blessed. And I was a little skeptical at first with this process. I thought, oh my God, 20-plus people in a room, there's no way we're going to get some answers anytime soon. But the facilitators really did a fantastic job corralling, you know, I call it like corralling cats sometimes, you just, but they did a fantastic job. And I was, I mean, the end result, you know, you say, we've got a comprehensive plan, but not just because of the focus areas that came out of all the data, but because you really were able to link together, this committee was really able to link together, student needs with teacher needs, with even administrative needs, with all of the faculty and staff, and what the community needs, what the parents need. And this really encompasses a great plan for moving forward for the next five years. So it's exciting. I mean, and the next step is definitely the hardest work. We had it easy, looking back now. I'm like, okay, they have to implement all of this. That's where the real work begins. But the committee certainly set up the Bourne Public Schools for some great continued success because we've already had some fantastic success. So thank you for inviting us to this process. And we've learned a lot. I think for Peter and I, we've had conversation too about, you know, rethinking, how do we connect our vision and mission as a community, as leaders in the community, with our schools? So, and I loved, the voices of the students had a profound impact in this process, and they didn't hesitate to speak up. They were a little shy the first morning, but I brought the best snacks, so.
They did.
I think that's why. To get comfortable fast.
Definitely. It was eye-opening. It was, thank you for allowing us to be in the beep-harvest process. I'm a lifelong resident here, and I, probably my whole adult life, I've been an elected official one way or another. So it was nice to give back in another way. The students, the students were really fun to listen to because my daughter's a little older than they are, and so I got the, nice to hear their perspective on life because they are the future. And so for them to have, you know, to have input in the end to put this stamp on this plan goes a long way because that's what we're here for. We're here for the students more than anything else. And then seeing, you know, we have new administration coming, you know, that I've never met before. You know, some of them I've known forever, and I'd be remiss if we don't publicly recognize Christine Bourne as the next Assistant Superintendent of Schools. I mean, it's very. And I will put a plug in for Dave Undell. I mean, David, I've known David's wife my whole life, and I know, but David's great. I mean, the people who are here in this district here, they love the students. They want to make sure the students have the best of everything so they're successful out in the working world and in life. And that's what you want, you know? And people say that being inclusive is a bad word these days, but I'm sorry, it's the other way around. You know, we want to be there, you know, we want everybody to be able to have a voice. And everybody's different, but we want to hear what those differences are, and that's what makes us a better person. So it's been, it's been fun. I mean, thank you for allowing us to be a part of this process. I mean, if you have any other initiatives in the future, if I'm still around after May, mid-May, then I would be more than glad.
We'll call on you.
I know, and you're right. And I'm glad that, you know, over the years, we're seeing sports always be in the forefront. And I'm not a jock by any means, but I love my sports. But it's nice for the arts and, you know, and music, you know, to be there as well now, more and more. I mean, because I think it makes it more well-rounded at school. We can sit in a classroom all day long and learn textbooks, but to enrich and give that variety in life, you know, just makes a much better student, a much better educational environment. So thanks for all that you do. It's not easy. So thanks, and I really appreciate it for allowing us.
Thank you so much.
All right, last call. You know, we have some shy folks, but that's okay. So again, a heartfelt thanks to everyone. You can see here, they gave so much of their time, their thought. It was an amazing process. So tonight, I'll be seeking that you approve the language so that we can put it all in. And I'm happy to take any questions or reflections from the school committee right now.
So this is in just how many slides we have here? Fifteen slides? Fourteen slides? I mean, this is, I'm sure, just a tremendous amount of work. So thank you very much to everyone who participated. Especially, thank you to Peter and Ann Marie. I mean, this is, it's so important to have people outside the district participating in things like this because we're one town, and that connection is really important. So thank you. And the kids are always the best part. I mean, the Student Advisory Board is, I have to say, my favorite part of the school committee. And so it's the best, you know, way to really get real truthful information is from the students. So to have student voice is just critical. And I love that this district is putting student voice in everything. You know, students were at the interviews for Mrs. Bourne. So, and students are at interviews for new positions being hired. Students are, they just get the, have a voice heard for so many things now, and it's, I really feel like that's just really beneficial to Bourne. So thank you for that. But I have a question about, so does this, the focus areas, are those now going to be like the school improvement plans? Like, will they be the focus areas in the school improvement plans?
So they'll, just like our last strategy that had the three, now we have the four. So yes, so the school improvement plans will align directly to all of this work. They still might have something else in it, right? But if you look at Tier One instruction, is everything that happens in our schools? as everything that happens in our schools, so it's going to be really easy to align. But yes, you'll see, we'll be asking for a connection to this plan for the next five years. It'd be pretty hard to have something disconnected.
Right, right.
All-encompassing.
Everything will always come back to this plan, basically, for five years. Yep, it's great.
Comments?
I was gonna say, I want to second Peter with Mr. Lundell. He's, just saying, he's been great. You know, my children had him as teachers and even as, you know, support with, when they were struggling with math back in the year, you know, years and years ago. And he's, he's great. So hopefully, he gets, you know, those conversations, too.
I love the accolades for any of our staff members. I'm just so not there yet. Because the search process, there's just always a process. So, but thank you for the accolades. I'm sure he'll appreciate it. Yeah.
But this is great, and it's succinct, and it's simple, and I think the community can follow it, you know? And then the communication has been great to kind of support, and people will be able to see, you know, what we're doing. So I think it's amazing.
I think for me, I hope you can see it, there are more places for input. So, you know, as Mr. Meyer said, yes, we'll be calling on you again, especially as an alumni. You know, there are places to, you know, to have more input over the course of the next five years. It's not like a, okay, now we're done, and we know what we're doing. Because sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And as part of this process, we'll be, you know, making a plan, getting input, implementing the plan. There's at least three or four plans as part of this plan, because it's a process.
So on the implementation part, when your timeline columns, will you now break it down and say, okay, this is our beginning 2025 to-do list, and this is our beginning 2026? I mean, some of them go span the whole five years, but some of them don't start till 2027, you know? So that kind of just, it might be nurturing along the way, but it's not bubbling up yet as opposed to a 2025, 2026. Is that how it will be broken out?
You got it. And if you recall, and I kept saying this to the two facilitators, Pam and Gary, I'm like, have you seen our last plan? It was fourteen pages. I'm like, how can you just give me four? But, so each of these, you can imagine, they'll get broken out. That will be our work this summer, especially when we get the best use plan, right? That first one, we'll really, we'll really launch a bunch of the things in the facilities and the enrollment. The PD plan for the next couple of years, we'll have all of these different pieces. So, yeah, I think there's so much more work to do even in the planning of this, but this gives us a pretty nice roadmap. This is basically taking out, you know, a map of America and saying, we want to get, you know, to this state. But there's an awful lot of planning along the way, so. Either, comments?
Great. I have a comment. I thought this was a wonderful opportunity as the newest school committee member, and I guess I'm not that new anymore, but it still feels it. It was nice to get to meet everybody and get to know a lot of the administrators that I haven't met in the past. So I really found that to be great. And I love the students. The student voices were amazing. It was nice to see everybody as involved as they were. You know, it didn't feel like anybody was just there to hang out for three hours. Everybody was really involved and used their voice. It was nice.
Yeah, it was nice. And I think collaborative is the word. And, you know, many of our elected officials were parents or alumni. But we also had one parent who stepped up for the whole process, and I want to call her out, Michelle Gary. She was wonderful. She's with her daughter somewhere right now at a something like we all have, right? So she couldn't make it tonight. But I think that she, she really took on one of our, one of our norms was to honor the empty seat, which is funny, I have an empty seat here right now. Just that we know that not everyone, not every voice could be in the room. So we represent, you know, all of these other possible voices. So there was a lot of, you know, I'm speaking for myself, or I'm speaking for a group, or, and I think that people really, really honored that, that, you know, there's collectively, there's another saying, the answer's in the room. And I really like that saying, because usually, if you've got enough intelligent, invested people in one space, you're gonna come up with some pretty great stuff. So I thought that was what the process was.
I second thanking Michelle Gary, because Mrs. Gary steps up for everything, and she is, she really contributes a lot. So we appreciate that.
And our teachers were phenomenal. They had to do lesson plans. And Mrs. DeGawen doesn't want to speak, but I do want to call her out, saying thank you for coming. Wonderful to have you and Mrs. Ribeiro and Mrs. Strode. They, it takes a lot to set up your class to not be there. And they were so invested, and we were just really thankful to have their perspective. Also, people who do too much and always say yes, so. Just a great process.
Good. So if there are no more questions, we're gonna, we do, took a vote on this right now? So we need a motion to approve the written plan? What, so what are we, we're just approving-
The draft strategic plan.
Just drafts.
I move to approve the draft strategic plan.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Okay. So all those in favor of approving the draft strategic plan and adding your part of this?
I am.
Aye? Opposed? Excellent. Plan approved.
Thank you. I think it takes applause for everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Great.
Great. All right, so moving on.
We can give a minute if anyone wants to.
Yeah, so folks definitely. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thanks, Lola. Thank you, Mrs. DeGawen.
So we do not have a teaching and learning update.
Okay.
Because I gave that big announcement, but we definitely will at the next meeting. I have the budget and facilities update. Mr. Geis couldn't be with us tonight. He will definitely be with us at the next meeting. So let me, there's a few important things as part of it, and some also have to do with some of the votes, so I'll be happy to talk about that again later. Okay, here we go. So, the grandstand project, the bleachers, which went out to bid today, is proceeding as planned. It's important to note that the bid clearly states that if the funding request is not approved at the upcoming town meeting, the bid will be voided. This language was deliberately included to protect the district in the event that funding was not secured. We'll keep you informed as we proceed with this project. Additionally, I'm pleased to share that the Born Public Schools has been awarded a grant for smoothie equipment at each school. It'll be vibrant. Totalling $4,938.72 from the New England Dairy Council. This grant will provide much-needed equipment to enhance the health and wellness offerings across our district. And we'd like you to please vote to accept that tonight. It came in late, so if we could vote, put it as a vote.
Yeah, sure.
And I'll be happy to, you know, say all those numbers again. Also, in your folders, you will find a document regarding the transfer of two vans to the Cape Cod Collaborative in exchange for $55,000 in transportation credits. This transaction was approved by the Cape Cod Collaborative last month and is now pending approval by the Born Public School Committee. So in essence, this has been in the works for a while. The Cape Cod Collaborative, who is our transportation provider, needed more vans. We had vans that we weren't using, and so we sought valuation on it. We've approved it through Colby, through our attorney, that this is something that the collaborative is of us, and we are of the collaborative. And so therefore, this transfer is completely fine to do legally. So in essence, they would give us $55,000 in credit that would go against our transportation bill. We could use it this year or next year, depending on when we wanted to do that. So that will be a vote a little later on. And then I can give the other reports with the reports and presentations later. Any questions for facilities and budget? Great. All right, so next is technology. And we know that some of our administrators are not here or are peeling off. There's, life is really, there's a lot going on. Or there's sickness or other stuff, so please just give us some grace. Kristen is Chris.
So the technology department has, was busy during the month of March. A lot of time was spent preparing for the spring administration upgrades, three through, three through eight MCAS exam. Desi began using a new platform this year to administer the MCAS, and we had to make sure that our Chrome devices were compatible with the new system. The high school has already tested successfully. A big thank you to Deb Bisnet and the technology department for all the work that she has put into preparing our devices for the new MCAS. We also have begun the onboarding process of our new unified messaging system, ParentSquare. This new system will replace the current systems that we have in place for messaging parents and caregivers. Information about Parents Square will be shared with staff and families in the coming weeks. In addition, in partnership with the high school, the technology department has begun the design process for the new state-of-the-art cyber lab for the Computer Science Information Innovation Career Pathway. I think he did that on purpose.
Yeah.
This lab will be outfitted with professional computer workstations, wall-mounted multi-screen displays, and the latest networking technology. Ultimately, this former computer lab classroom is being reimagined into a professional cyber computing workspace. It will be ready for the 25-26 school year. And finally, we are making, continuing to make updates and changes to our network security in light of recent upticks in cyber crimes across the country. This includes finding the right balance of network and website restrictions across the schools. That's it from Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Student Services, Special Education?
Yep, I just have two, really. We also had an early release day for professional development on March 21st, totally it was. So the special ed department hosted Dr. Hollenbeck, Jean Hollenbeck, who, for our service providers, including how to facilitate inclusion-based services to maximize the generalization of targeted skills, specifically looking at speech, OTPT, APE, that cohort of folks. Clinicians walked away with very specific takeaways of things to try the very next day. The feedback from all the providers was very positive. And we are looking to have Dr. Hollenbeck back in the future for some further collaboration on how to make schedules and services work in an ideal way for kids, but maximizing on the inclusion potential there. The second update is, we did recently just receive our findings from Desi. If you remember, one of our TFM audits was for special ed civil rights. So we, it has just recently been released. Majority of the findings demonstrated that Born had successfully met compliance, which is great. We had about five to seven areas that were deemed partially met. So all areas were satisfactorily met, with just some needing some further areas to be tweaked. And so we will be required to have a corrective action that I'll be working on with Desi starting next week. And then once all of those documents are finalized, they'll be available for public review. But much like you saw in the strategic plan, this will kind of guide some of our next, kind of next steps to make sure that we, next round, we are compliant in all areas. So, but that's it for me.
All right, so now we're going to do past events report and upcoming events preview. So, Dr. McGuire, what did you like to start?
Oh, sure.
Come on up.
I usually end.
I know, but you're here, so. Yeah, it's very exciting. We're gonna flip this one.
Good evening, everybody. Last week, ELA MCAS took place, and we want to thank our students and families for taking the assessment really seriously in both attendance and participation. We'd like to thank Chris Oliver and Deb Bisnet for their tech support, and Donna Cox and Guidance for really making sure that all of the testing process happened smoothly, and it did. In upcoming events, our Quarter III closes this Friday. In conjunction with that, we'll be holding our Quarter III B2B Awards Assembly in just a few weeks, on April 18th, to recognize students for both their B2B core values demonstrated through the school community as well as academics. And that's just a nice time to get our students and staff together. And students and staff are both nominated by anyone in our community. On Friday, I'm sorry, not Friday. On April 8th, we're hosting our annual Poetry Slam, which is an event that takes place here in the library. Students who are interested in poetry are encouraged to register. And we also host area schools who bring in their poets. In the morning, students participate in poetry writing and performance workshops led by our guest poets. And after lunch, the competition portion occurs where a grand champion is selected. We usually have two expert, professional poets who come in and guide our students in just a wonderful day of poetry writing and presentation. Next week, we also have the SAT. Next week, we also have the SAT, I think I'm ahead by a week, April 16th. In-school SAT for juniors is happening, so they will be sitting for the SATs and getting ready for the college process to kind of officially kick off, spring of junior year, and that happens right before vacation.
Okay, thank you. Great, all right, middle school? We'll go in reverse order.
Always in the middle.
Good evening. Thank you to our PTA, who hosted a fantastic March Madness event on March 14th. Our students enjoyed jousting, sumo wrestling, basketball, some games, pizza, and more. And a huge thank you to CAM Appliance, who sponsored the entire event, so it was free for students, and we had a lot of parent chaperones there as well supporting, so that was great. We really appreciate that. We also had a very successful bingo night with a great turnout and fantastic prizes. Special congratulations to Owen Emberg, who won the big prize of the night. He was principal for the day. He served as principal last Friday, and he kept the building running very smoothly. I know there's some shout-outs for Dave, but Owen is a strong contender. He even kept me in line, and he was just wonderful, so that was great. On March 21st, we hosted a very successful career fair. We had nine panelists, including Don Albeals, actually, come and speak to our students about their work, the classes they took in high school, if they took college courses, how those classes helped them prepare for their current careers. And they all gave great advice to our students. We had a really wide range of careers, from landscaping, and we had police officers, but also medical research, and Cape Cod Healthcare was there. It was just, and Don Al, it was a really great turnout. The BMS students were very engaged throughout the presentation. They had these booklets that had been made by the team, where they were able to follow the bio and take notes, and every kid was like taking notes throughout the whole thing. It was really, they did such a wonderful job. And they finished up the day by writing thank you notes to one of the presenters. A huge thank you to our college and career-connected learning team for all of their hard work, and a particular shout-out to Brittany Mallon, who did quite a bit of the heavy lifting on this particular event. It was really positive, and I can't wait to see it happening again next year. We have officially entered what we like to call MCAS season in middle school, because as you've heard me say, our eighth grade, all of our students take math in ELA, and then our eighth graders also take science and civics. So, it goes on for quite a while. We have ELA MCAS on April 9th and 10th for all of our students. At BMS, we have been very focused on helping all of our students to give their best effort and to really demonstrate what they know on these assessments. They've been engaged in regular practice with the new MCAS portal. They've been setting specific goals based on their last year's scores, and they, so they actually have their two previous year's scores in front of them, and they're setting, doing some individual goal-setting around that. Caregivers received an MCAS-specific newsletter this week with information about the importance and importance of MCAS, the ways we're preparing and encouraging their students to do their best, and ways caregivers can also support students in giving their best effort on MCAS. Like the high school, our Quarter Three closes Friday with report cards coming out next Friday, and we also will be hosting our B2B and Honorable Celebration after vacation. We are excited to celebrate National Librarians' Day on Friday, and National Assistant Principals' Week next week. We are lucky to have an incredible librarian, Mrs. Royal. She teaches classes and supports our students with building literacy, research, and more every day. And of course, as you've already heard tonight, we all would be lost without Dave Lundell. He knows every student, he provides individualized support for students and staff, and he actually also carries some courses on his caseload as well. He's really incredible. Our Junior METG Play, All I Really Need to Know, I Learned by Being in a Bad Murder Mystery, has been rehearsing weekly, and they're almost ready for competition. We have a school-wide preview on April 30th during WIN, followed by a public performance on Friday, May 2nd. That is gonna be at 7:00 PM here. Everyone is welcome, I believe it's free. And then, the students will head to Marshfield the next day, May 3rd, for the full-day festival competition, and they've been very successful over the last two years, and we know they are going to be very successful again. So, thank you so much.
Good morning. Ms. Colbert, BIS?
I also have a message from Lisa Dix.
Oh, great.
To Steen Posium, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna start with that.
Please do.
Like Chris, I think she gave me a tongue twister as I'm reading through this, so maybe I should have done a trial one. So, Steen Posium 2025, a Night of Curiosity, Creativity, and Catapults, was on Thursday, March 27th. Over 250 budding scientists, engineers, tinkers, and innovators gathered for our annual Steen Posium, and what an electrifying event it was. From balloon car races to roller coaster design challenges, to precision cup stacking, to mini catapult launches, every table sparked imagination and ignited the unmistakable Steen spirit. And then, I have to say, the principal of the day the next day did have one of the highlights, and he built principal, and it still says principal on, on the launch, by the media center. They thought it was me, but I'm not that skillful with launching. Massive kudos to Sherri Correa and Tony Perry for our dynamic duo of Steen Dreamers for planning and executing this engaging event for four stellar years in a row. Their passion continues to make science and engineering come alive for our students and families. A special shout-out to our incredible admin team for their unwavering support, whether it was through planning logistics, spreading the word, or showing up in force to cheer on our learners, your presence was felt and appreciated. We were also thrilled to welcome community collaborators whose real-world expertise gave our students a glimpse of Steen in action. We had, I believe this is how you pronounce the owl's name, Loki, the owl, who was a hit, from the Cape Cod Wildlife Sanctuary, New England Coastal Wildlife Alliance, Marine Biology Laboratory, Friends of Mashpee Wildlife Refugee, Mass Maritime Academy, BORN Community Boating, the Green Team, and Woods Hole Science, Technology, and Education Partnership. Together, we built, launched, discovered, and most importantly, had fun learning. Thank you to everyone who made this event a Steentacular success. Mark your calendars now. Our 2026 Steen Posium is already in orbit. Join us Thursday, March 26th, for a theme that is out of this world. We're reaching for the stars, solar system and beyond. Get ready to blast off into the universe of discovery. And that was, and I can't say enough to Lisa Dix for everything that she did in this amazing event. It was truly spectacular. And to that, BIS had a very busy march filled with character parades to celebrate Read Across America, a visit from Dusty Bowling, who was the author of Insignificant Events in the Life of a Cactus. She was our author for our One Book One School, and she came and visited BIS, signed books for all students, and also brought special plates for students that didn't have books so that they could take something home. And then, she presented to each grade level after, in the afternoon, just about her life in Arizona and what brought her to be an author, and it was truly a wonderful afternoon. She did request, her only request was clam chowder, which she did have from Greg Abels, and she said it was the best she's ever had. So, she left very, very happy. From there, we all rocked our socks to celebrate World Dancing Day, and ending with this fun-filled Steen Posium that we just, I just shared from Lisa Dix. April kicked off really today with a light-up in blue, in blue jeans, in recognition for autism awareness. We also started a very special month for BORN. We launched the celebration of Month of the Military Child, and it's something that I'm learning each day, how special it is for the town of BORN. Each day, BIS has one student, whose parent is an active military, come to the office and read either a quote or a fact about the life in the military. And it's really, some of them the students put in that we didn't know, so we're all learning together with these facts. BIS and all of BPS will welcome students and family members of active, I hope we're not stealing the announcement, active military members to BIS on Friday, April 18th, for a morning reception to show our gratitude for all they do. In the past, from what I've been told, it's been a BIS event, but this year, it will be a BPS event where we'll welcome all students from all of the schools to BIS, and we'll have a reception, and they'll be singing, and students will be discussing kind of their life experiences in the military. Next week, as Christine mentioned, we celebrate our assistant principals, and I would be remiss if I didn't give a huge shout-out to Alan Trot. She truly is my sidekick. Our quote is, "We're here for it because we're learning new things almost every single day," and she truly is everything that I could have asked for in an assistant principal, and shows up day in and day out, and is 100% in it for our children. And so, we are very, very fortunate to have her. Next week, students in grades three through eight, excuse me, three through five, will show off how incredibly smart they are when we kick off our MCAS season. We have shortened BIS's MCAS for ELA 2.1 week, so Tuesday, Thursday will be grades four and five, and Wednesday, Friday will be grades three, and we're doing a quick little kickoff on Monday for a celebration of that. Following spring break, BIS will transform into a world of superheroes for National Superhero Day on Monday, April 28th. So, if you have your superhero cakes, please join us as we all become heroes for the day. So, thank you very much.
Lots of great things happened over the month of March. I do not have that on my report, so just look at the Facebook page. So much fun. Most of what you heard here, we rocked our socks. We, you know, we did some really fun things. Today, even though it's April, you can see a lot of us are in blue because it's, we're blue for autism awareness. But, looking forward at BES, on the 3rd, they had MTSS reward stations at recess, and they will also have, as I think you just heard, Light It Up You tomorrow night, Be There, Be Square, 5:30 to 7 o'clock. It's another big event at BES, but it's open to the entire district. So, students and families will be hosting tables. LPAC will be there, our DEI committee will be there, and it's really a celebration of the uniqueness of everybody. It was originally Light It Up Blue for Autism Awareness, and we in BORN over the past at least four years have expanded that to Light It Up You, so it's a lot of fun. Hope some folks can make it there. Also, we'll have Assistant Principal Appreciation Day. Shout-out to Ellen McLaughlin. And then, kindergarten registration is in full swing, so on April 8th and 10th, please call for your appointment for the class of 2038.
Oh, wow.
So exciting. And I do know, I've seen, I've been over at BES many mornings the past couple of weeks, and parents are coming in and signing up, and it's really exciting. We also put it in the paper this year because we really wanted to make sure everybody saw it. As was said extensively, Purple Up Day for military families, we're very excited about that. An invite will go out to all of you, but please mark your calendars now, 9:30 AM at BIS. All military students from the districts, not the entire district at BIS, but all military students are invited, and their families, and folks from Drank Bay's Cape Cod. So, again, it's for active military families. So, it's not, it'll be similar to our Veterans Day celebration, but it really is for active military families, and we're looking forward to hearing the voices of our students. We'll hear from at least one student from each grade, each school, and also from our beautiful BORN High School singers, we'll do our service songs. It'll be really great. On the 29th, it's Bus Driver Appreciation Day and Poem in My Pocket Day. If you have not taken part in a BES Poem in My Pocket Day, it is a lot of fun. I would invite anyone to come. Basically, the children all have a little poem in their pocket, and they will catch you in the hall, and they will ask you if they can read it to you, and they hope that you have one too. So, if you're coming to BES on the 29th of April, please make sure to bring your poem. And then, lastly, at the end of the month, we'll round it out on April 30th with the National Therapy Animal Day, and we have therapy animals in our schools at BES. It is Shamrock, who is beloved. Shamrock had the days off this week. I heard he was on paid vacation. And we also have at other schools some really, some really great service animals. So, that's the report from Bourndale. That concludes, let me make sure, that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. So, next, we're gonna go over the superintendent's evaluation. Okay, so, just for anyone watching on TV, I know we have a very big audience if anyone watches. Each year, we evaluate superintendent. We have changed it a little bit for the timeline so that it is, the cycle ends in January so that we can complete the evaluation with the group that has been working with the superintendent for that year. In the past, the superintendent, the evaluation would be completed in May, and then, if there were school committee members leaving for that year, then they wouldn't get to participate in the evaluation process, and then you'd also have new members who came on that had no experience with the committee at that point. So, we changed things around a little bit. So, this evaluation ran from fall of 2023 to January of 2025. And the way it works is there are, we assess progress towards superintendent's goals. So, at the start of the cycle, Dr. Jo gave us her goals, which I will go through in a second, and then, we evaluate those goals. Each school committee member does their own evaluation form, and then, I compiled the results from all of the forms. So, if any member wants to look at all the forms to see how they were compiled, they're in this folder. And then, we give one overall evaluation. And then, after we evaluate on the goals, we also evaluate on performance on standards. So, there are standards, instructional, leadership, management, and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. So, I'll just go through the evaluation, and Dr. Jo has already received her copy last Wednesday, and the committee had plenty of time to read through the evaluation, the final evaluation, and make any comments or suggest any changes. Okay, so, the goals, professional practice goal. So, Dr. Jo's goal, "By January 2025, the superintendent will develop skills and deepen her understanding of topics retained to belonging equity, diversity, and inclusion by actively engaging in professional development activities such as MAD, MADESE slash mass, MASSS, REDI framework."
I know, so many acronyms.
What do those acronyms stand for? What is, okay, M A, actually, you can tell, what is MADES?
I'm trying to see here, which page are you on?
I'm page three. So, looking at the actual goals that are listed on page three. Just as a point of reference, the...
Oh, Mass Desi.
Oh, Mass Desi, okay. I'm thinking it's mad something.
Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and then Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. Ready is, I don't know what ready means, but it has, it has the E and the D and the I in there, and that's what it stands for.
Okay, I was thrown off by the Massachusetts. I'm like, what is MAD ESE? It's not mad at all.
No, not mad.
Okay, all right, so, there are also links, so this evaluation will be linked to the agenda so that anyone can look at it, and there are links embedded in the evaluation as well, and that has all of Dr. Jo's documentation for these goals. So, we gave Dr. Jo an exceeding, exceeded on this, so you can either have, did not meet some progress, significant progress, and that or exceeded, and we feel Dr. Jo exceeded in this category. Student learning goal, "As a result of progress toward District Strategy 2, which is to expand capacity in all educators to analyze data, identify and eliminate equity gaps, monitor student progress, identify intervention and enrichment learning opportunities. By June 2024, the ELA and Math MCAS data for spring 2024 will show a five-point increase in average scaled score for all students category and achievement gaps closing for student subgroup populations." So, we gave Dr. Jo a met in this category. We did feel that there were a lot of, although MCAS scores aren't as high as we hoped they could be, there were a lot of areas that were definitely met within this category. District improvement goal number one, engage all stakeholders through consistent communication and outreach efforts to provide multiple opportunities to partner with the district. By January 2025, input from multiple stakeholders will be gathered regarding the possibility of re-leveling our school buildings to accommodate different grade levels based on projected enrollment and trends. If applicable, a plan for re-leveling will be designed with stakeholder input. Again, we gave Dr. Jo a met in this category. We do feel, although we didn't create the actual plan to re-level at this time, we obviously, from what everyone heard tonight, we are on the right track to that, and we have done all of the legwork, we have done all of the legwork for that goal. So, District Improvement Goal number two, in reference to District Strategy 3, 3A, to expand capacity to develop high-quality aligned Tier One instruction in all areas. By January 2025, effectiveness of professional development of best practices in Tier One instruction will be evident in data such as through educator feedback, learning walks, and educator evaluation system, and we scored Dr. Jo as exceeded in this category, so we feel that that was all completed in a very seemingly high way. Okay, so, the next section of the evaluation is the performance on standards. So, standard one is instructional leadership, and so, I'm in page, okay, instructional leadership. We scored Dr. Jo a proficient in this category, and I'm just going to read the comment for this. "Dr. Jo has assembled a strong team by fostering meaningful relationships with administration at all levels. Dr. Jo and our administrative team have brought much-needed K-12 assessment tools to measure our Tier One instructional effectiveness. Each school speaks the same vocabulary when analyzing results. Dr. Jo continued to use WIN, what I need, time block, for our K-2 population to accommodate the needs of each student based on the analysis of the data. Through Power School and Open Architect, data is available to offer the best instruction for the needs of every student. Through learning walks, instructional practices are monitored to ensure consistent, high-quality instruction across the district." So, that is instructional leadership. Sorry, a minor front to back, so I'm getting lost. Okay, standard number two, management and operations. We give Dr. Jo a proficient in this category as well. Here we go, okay. "The budget is a year-long process that references and supports our school improvement plans and our district strategic action plan, as well as the academic and social emotional needs of our student body. She has done an excellent job with fiscal management, being creative and resourceful while maintaining a balanced budget. By sitting on multiple boards across the state of Massachusetts, Dr. Jo is knowledgeable about policies, laws, and mandates that impact her district. Dr. Jo has cultivated and maintained strong, positive relationships across the district, and the quick and efficient negotiations process was a direct reflection of this work. Our union leadership has evolved when cuts are forecasted, and this year, union leadership worked with the school administrators to collaborate on how to reorganize and redistribute staff to avoid the least job loss. Communication among effective groups promotes transparency and respect across the district." Standard number three, family and community engagement. We score Dr. Jo proficient in this category, and the comment is, "Dr. Jo has made community building a priority over the past two years by implementing many initiatives to engage students, staff, families, and community partners. The Building Bridges Program has strengthened the homeschool connection and provided an opportunity for families and community involvement. She has worked with building administrators to prioritize opportunities for families to come into the schools and learn about the programs offered by the district. There has been an increase in student voice across all buildings through the Student Advisory Board, Student Council, and by allowing students to participate in focus groups and planning committees. She has also developed new partnerships with Mass Maritime Academy, Bridgewater State University, and Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. These relationships have had an immediate impact on our high school students and will continue to benefit BPS students in the future. Most importantly, Dr. Jo has shown patience and respect to students and families when it comes to the large decisions in the district. She has included all members of the school community when hiring new administrative staff, increasing academic opportunities, and developing a plan for the future of BPS. She has sent surveys, held focus groups, met with students and families, and provided opportunities for staff to give input. This type of collaboration does not happen in all districts and is greatly appreciated." And then, the last standard was professional culture, and we feel that Dr. Jo was exemplary in this category. And, the comment reads, "Dr. Jo has made it a priority to connect all areas of our community by developing a strong vision for the district. She has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to promoting high standards and continuing improvement. The district and school improvement plans hold staff to a high standard and require more accountability in order to meet the needs of all students in the district. Most importantly, she has included all stakeholders by allowing everyone to have a voice in decision-making. Dr. Jo has ensured all policies and practices are followed, has maintained a safe and welcoming environment for all students, and has embraced change even when difficult. When newcomers entered the district, Dr. Jo calmly and enthusiastically communicated the tone of welcome and acceptance. She made sure schools had the personnel and materials to begin to educate these students. She never wavered from the ultimate goal of educating all students." And lastly, the overall evaluation comment, so our overall summative evaluation is proficient, which is excellent, that's an excellent evaluation rating. Proficient means that we're just doing exactly what we would like to say in the district. So, the comment is, "Dr. Jo has demonstrated true leadership over the past two years. She has built and led a team of dedicated administrators who have worked tirelessly to improve curriculum, instruction, evaluations, and communication. She has strengthened positive relationships with the members of the BORN Educators Association by successfully settling four contract... By successfully settling four contracts in a matter of weeks, Dr. Jo has shown respect, commitment, and collaboration with her staff of BPS. It is not common for districts to settle contracts in such a timely collaborative manner. This achievement should be noticed and appreciated by all members of the Bourne community. Regarding the budget, Dr. Jo has been creative, transparent, and fiscally responsible. With cost increases and academic needs constantly changing, Dr. Jo always puts students first. She has worked with administrators, staff, families, students, and community partners to ensure students receive the best education possible while still maintaining a balanced budget. She has included all stakeholders in major decisions and has put much time and thought into every change made across the district. She has provided a voice for students, which is a cornerstone of success. As far as inclusivity, Dr. Jo has ensured all students receive the best education in a safe and welcoming environment. She has provided professional development for staff and has joined multiple committees and boards to further her knowledge on policies and practices. She has invited speakers and outside educators into the district to train staff on cultural proficiency, special education initiatives, and teaching practices such as math workshop. By continuing her own professional development, she has been able to bring ideas and best practices into our schools. Although there is still work to be done and challenges that will arise, Dr. Jo has proven to be a strong leader who calmly works through challenges, never straying from the best interests of the students. We look forward to continued success and improvement within our schools. So, that's a lot. That's a lot.
That's a lot.
But like I said, I mean, everyone will have this to look through. And there's, each focus indicator has its own little part, so you can see all of the scores. And I just also want to say that the, all of the comments were, everyone's comments put together. So everyone had it put in the comments. And so everyone from this committee's voice was definitely, was definitely heard in each of those comments.
May I?
Please. I need a drink of water.
I'm humbled. You know, almost speechless, doesn't happen often. I really appreciate, in your overall, you talk about the team because I couldn't do this without the team. The team is amazing, and they work so hard. So I want to be appreciative that you see us, like you really see us and you see the work. And this committee has been probably the most involved I've seen for committees in a long time. You just keep getting even more awesome. So I want to thank you for that because we couldn't do it without your support, you know, without your investment. So as humbled as I am for these kind words, you know, superintendents say, thank you for saying proficient is good, right? Proficient is the A, exemplary is the A plus. And to have a couple of A pluses in the mix make my heart happy. So because you see that there are things that are, that are hard. Negotiations was hard, but it also was really good. And that's the partnership we have with the BEA. These things don't happen overnight. And so here we are in year five, and I'm seeing things start to gel. And I'm genuinely very excited about where we're going. And I'm very appreciative that you see that we're going there. So thank you. Thanks for the time you put into this and really understanding the work that we do every day for our kids.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
We just appreciate your leadership, and you model the always learning. You just set the bar very high, so everybody tries to achieve that, have expectations. So thank you for your vision. Thank you for your leadership and representing us so well in all the different obligations that you find yourself in.
I can't say no.
So we, does this require a vote? I can't even.
I believe you have it on there.
Yes. Okay. We do need a vote to approve the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Addie, you can vote on this as well. And I would also like to say that Addie was at, we did have a meeting, all of us at the beginning, to go over the process of how to evaluate the superintendent. And we looked at the goals, so the professional practice, student learning, and the two district improvement goals. And so Addie was a part of that, and she was part of the conversation. And so thank you for being part of that.
Thank you.
Okay. All, so we may, do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay. So, sorry. All those in favor of approving the superintendent goals?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Goals approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving along. So we have subcommittee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee, did curriculum Subcommittee?
No.
No. Policy Subcommittee did meet at the minutes from Policy Subcommittee, and we have a few votes that we are bringing to the full committee for this. So we had two job discussions on job descriptions. We had the Director of Facilities and Grounds. This position was pulled from the union to be a supervisory position. Jordan helped with this. He was the one that brought this to us. The format's modeled from other positions in other local school districts that have a similar position already in place. So it captures everything that the head of the building does. And this new position will have the ability to supervise and evaluate custodians along with the building principal. Supervise with the building principal, won't be supervising the building principal. Independent contract will need to be negotiated with the superintendent. So we approved this job description to come to full committee for a vote, and you've had this job description in your folder to view. So I don't know, Jordan's not here, but I don't know, Dr. Jo, was there anything else we needed to add to this or talk about?
No, I think it was ready to go unless there are any questions. So it's not a new position. It's just not going to be in the union anymore. So we currently have someone who does many of these duties except for the supervisory piece. And so this would allow him to be able to do that as well, which will be great. And we've already negotiated with the union that it would come out.
Any questions about that? Okay. We'll just take a vote on that right now. All right. So is there a motion?
Motion to approve the facilities director position.
Second that?
The job description.
Job description.
Okay. All those in favor of approving facilities director job description? Aye. Opposed? Great. Approved. All right. And the second policy, the second job description was the district physician position. And we, that was already filled by Dr. Carolyn Saluti, which was announced at the last school committee meeting. The job description has been updated to include all aspects of the position. It was developed by the head nurse, Rebecca Esip, and by Kristin Donahue. Kristin, did you want to say anything else about this job description, or was it?
No, it was really just to finalize, we didn't really have a comprehensive job description. So it was a, let's do it right with the new person.
Any questions about that job description? Okay. Motion.
We have to approve the school physician job description.
Second. All those in favor of approving the district physician job description? Aye. Opposed? Excellent. Approved. Okay. And then we also had a discussion on the advertising policy that we already had a discussion in the past, policy KHAA. We continue to discuss what an outside agency is. We changed wording to include PTA, Bourne Education Foundation, and district-recognized booster organizations under that, under the category that would always be approved to solicit information. As a subcommittee, we're asking Carrie, I'm sorry, Dr. Jo, to update the policy KHAA to meet the needs of the district and then bring it back to us at the next meeting. Because she's the one that's getting tons of these requests for flyers to go out. And so we felt that she could have more input on which categories things would fall into, whether they're district-based, whether they even really should be sent out to families if they're outside the district or not really benefiting our Bourne Public Schools students. So flyers and information will be distributed in multiple languages. And we also have, we were discussing like maybe a pay-as-you-go advertising. So we're going to continue to discuss this at our next meeting. And then eventually, we will bring it back to full committee for approval. And then the last policy we discussed was the Title IX policies. There might, we might have to bring them back to the 2020 version, but we're still waiting for guidance by mask or by the state. So we're still monitoring those. And then the future topics would be a digital integration specialist, which is a tech specialist. And that discussion will happen between administration and the union to create a new job description. Okay. Policy, budget, and facilities?
Meeting next week.
Meeting next week? Okay, great. Special OC PAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council.
We met earlier tonight before this meeting and discussed a bit about our next meeting where we'll have a presenter. And then in June, since we have not gotten a lot of traction with new members to CPAC, we're going to discuss how we can attract more members and hopefully get more interest in the group.
You do, you do have some members there, right? Like a good, strong group, but just not a lot?
We have a set, really about three that participate regularly.
Okay.
Yeah, just looking to expand that.
Okay. Cape Cod Collaborative, Maureen?
They too are getting a therapy dog next year. They've been fundraising, and I guess many years ago, they were gifted with some stock. And so the business manager sold it at the right time so that, because this therapy dog is expensive. It's not like, it comes with the person, you know? It's coming from a company to them. And so next year, they'll, they'll have one at their, at their school. So that's exciting for them. And we did review for the first time, the first reading of the new tuition rates for next year. So that will be coming up again next week.
Strategic Planning Committee, we already discussed. Was there anything additional?
No.
Are you sure? We discussed it thoroughly.
That was to nuts before, you know?
Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee?
Sure, I have the report here. I do need my reader for this. The DEIB Committee has met with student groups at all four schools to identify a way to promote the diversity of our community and belonging during April and May. At BES tomorrow evening, the DEIB Committee will be at Light It Up U event. Tomorrow, BIS students will meet with food service staff to choose diverse lunch menu items for a week in May. At BMS, Student Council will plan for promoting diversity and belonging at Curriculum Night on May 15. And finally, BHS students will engage in a week of trivia in May about the cultures and countries of the students in the Bourne Public Schools.
Technology Committee?
Chris passed a one that the Technology Committee did not meet because of the Assistant Superintendent search. So they will be moved.
Wellness Committee?
From Jordan Geis, we had a productive meeting last Thursday where we completed a draft of the revised wellness policy. I would like to thank everyone on the team for their valuable contributions. The draft has now been sent to our SWAP coach at the John Walker Institute for review and feedback. We anticipate receiving any necessary revision shortly. Our goal is to have an updated policy ready for the school committee by the end of May to ensure we meet all current health and wellness requirements.
Perfect. Ditto.
Emily, can I say one, add one more thing about Cape Cod Collaborative? They reorganize in June, and I will be at my last meeting in May. So I'm hoping somebody here will consider being the liaison. And I would love to take you down. I'd pick you up at your house, take you down to the, to the meeting so you can meet the director and their administrative staff. There are Zoom meetings. But it's nice, I think, to see where the STAR program is, just get an idea. It's hard to envision when you've never, ever seen it. The Waypoint Academy is further down, but it has, it has been a learning process, very enjoyable one. You see people from all over the Cape, and Martha's Vineyard, and Nantucket, and Plymouth next year. So I hope someone gives it some thought. And if you have any questions, reach out to me, and I'd be glad to bring you to the first, a meeting and then introduce you to everyone.
What is the meeting?
They're always the second Wednesday of every month. They begin at 5:15. You get your agenda, you can either get it in print or emailed to you the weekend before. And so...
So the, all right, so the next one is, next week, and then there's?
And then there'll be May. So for the May meeting. So I just wanted to give people time to consider it and join me at the May meeting.
Okay, great. That's what I was just checking. You'll, please, yes, because it's the...
Yeah. Isn't it the 21st or selections or in the twenties?
Oh, I thought they were the 12th. Are they not the 13th?
I think it's the week after.
Is it the 20th?
I think they're all in the 20s.
Okay.
I'll Google it.
Okay. So then the 14th would be, okay, great. All right, thanks, Maureen. Okay. I don't think we had anything else to discuss on the strategic plan. So we're going to move to our action items. We need a vote to approve warrants and payroll.
Move to approve warrants and payroll.
It's a roll call vote to approve warrants and payroll. Carrie?
Yes.
Say yes.
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 Okay. Warrants and payroll approved. Excellent. A vote to approve regular session minutes from February 5th, February 26th, and March 5th?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of approving regular session minutes, February 5th, February 26th, and March 5th? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Excellent. And it's approved. Okay. We need a vote to accept 108 grant for Project Lead the Way for the High School Computer Science Program in the amount of $25,000. Did you want to?
I think this is ready to go. I apologize, I should have brought your items up sooner, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I usually remember. It's just too taken by all the platitudes. It's really something.
So 108 is a foundation that's committed to supporting schools to adopt proven applied learning programs that inspire students with innovative and engaging programs focused on core and elective K-12 subjects. They partner with nearly 700 schools in Massachusetts and build partnerships across the state. And one of these areas is with Project Lead the Way. So when we started partnering with Project Lead the Way in anticipation for our computer science information pathway, Project Lead the Way offers a grant, but also said, hey, apply for this 108 grant as well. So we have just become the recipients of a three-year grant from 108 to help implement the Project Lead the Way course, we're doing Computer Science Essentials and Cybersecurity as part of the pathway. And so it's $25,000, $10,000 this year, and $7,500 for the two following. This will supply our students with computers and supplies to implement those two Project Lead the Way classes. And also is in conjunction with the grant that Chris discussed that will open the cybersecurity, computer lab range space. Really state-of-the-art, exciting location for our kids to learn and practice computer science.
Move to approve the, I need to read, the 108 grant for the Project Lead the Way High School Computer Science Program.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great. Grant approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have any progress?
We did.
Votes approved. Oh, we already did that. Oh, final approval for sixth grades Nature's Classroom Field Trip.
Yeah, so we have sixth grade scheduled to go to Nature's Classroom, May 5th to May 8th. They are, just as a reminder, and I do think there's, the original information is in your folders. They're going to the Charlton Hilltop location. The Nature's Classroom staff leads all the activities throughout the day. Our staff is there to support, and then our staff is on duty all night. And so we have a good group of chaperones going to supervise in the dorms and of course to support the daytime activities. There is a nurse on site, so we do not send a nurse to that. The classrooms are all like nature-based and science-based. And I know a big part of it is the community building that they do at Nature's Classroom around, like the meal time and things like that. They're excited to go. And then the students who opted not to go will have kind of a week of learning, but a little bit more project-based back at the building. Looking for final approval?
Do you have a lot of kids going to it? Did you get a good turnout?
Yeah, a good turnout. You know what? I don't have the exact number on Nature's, to be honest, but we have a good, it's like, I would say like two-thirds of the grade going.
Awesome. Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Move to approve the grade six nature's classroom field trip.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the grade six nature's classroom field trip? Aye. Opposed? All right, field trip number one approved.
Right. Number two, I'm standing here, yeah. So we also have our grade eight going to Washington DC from May 19th to May 22nd. We are working once again with the close-up tour company. They were fantastic last year. They provide not just the touring like an EF would provide, but they also provide on-the-spot education at each location, and then they put the students into workshops, even at the hotel for some of the time. Again, our staff is on-site the entire time to support, but their staff is very knowledgeable and does a really nice job of leading the students through like civics-based work throughout their time in DC. One of the things that I really like about the tour company is that they're, they're local to DC, so as opposed to another company where the people might also be from out of town but are familiar with DC, these people live in DC, in the DC area, and work there all the time with additional tours that come through. They set up all the logistics, and again, we have dedicated staff. We do have a nurse traveling with our group, a parent who is a nurse is going as part of our staff, and then there is medical support from local hospitals, which we have taken advantage of in the past. Hopefully will not this year.
Move to approve the grade eight DC trip.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the grade eight Washington DC field trip?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And then we have two, two more votes to approve. So the first is the transfer of vans to the Cape Cod Collaborative.
So as I said previously, we'll get $55,000 in exchange and as transportation credit, so it'll come off a future invoice, and they're very hopeful that they can start to put these used, obviously used vans into commission quickly. Right. Move to approve the transfer of vans to Cape Cod Collaborative.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the transfer of vans to the Cape Cod Collaborative? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thanks. Thank you so much, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then the last is a vote to request an additional $95,000 for the BMS chiller.
So it was discussed before, but we didn't officially bring it for a vote. We already brought it to the Board of Select, and they moved it through the capital process, so at this point, I just wanted to cycle back and make sure that the minutes reflected that it was officially voted here, because originally, it was part of our capital plan, our five-year plan that you vote on. So again, whenever it's fiscal, I just wanted to make sure that we had an approval vote from this body before it went to the other places it needed to go to, which is town meeting.
And I just want to make sure it's in the minutes, that the original cost of this was $255,000 when we were using train?
Yes.
When the town cut off the use of train and decided we weren't going to use train anymore, then it went out to bid, which now the new cost is $375,000. So unfortunately, that was not our district, the Bourne Public Schools fault, so it's just an unfortunate increase.
And it would have been done by now.
And it would have been done by now, yep.
I move to request the additional $95,000 for the BMS chiller.
Second that.
Okay, so this is going to be a roll call vote. Addie, you don't vote on this one. So, Carrie, yes. Maureen, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, all right.
And then, Madam Chair, if I could ask for a vote to accept the grant from the New England Dairy Council for $4,938.72 for our smoothie equipment?
We need a vote to add it to the agenda first, so, someone make a motion.
To add it to the agenda about the smoothie equipment?
That's very formal.
What a smooth entryway you did.
All those in favor of adding the vote to the agenda? Aye. Opposed? Great, okay, now we need a vote. What, what was the amount?
I'll say it again, yeah, and then, so if you could vote to accept a grant from the New England Dairy Council for $4,938.72 for smoothie equipment.
Somebody needs to make that motion.
So move to approve the? The amount of money for this. As presented.
From the New England Dairy Council.
From the New England Dairy Council. Second that.
All those in favor of approving the New England Dairy Council?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I think that's all of those, right?
And Jordan is extremely excited about this, so we are going to go get smoothies together.
So every school's going to have smoothies?
For breakfast, I believe.
Wow. That's amazing.
I don't know if it'll be every day all the time, but, you know, it's going to be great.
That is great.
And signage, and taste testing, and he's jazzed up, and so am I.
Okay, future agenda items, the strategic plan, the, in May, we will reorganize our roles as a committee, and then we will also have the Navigator Awards in June, and thank you very much to Kendall, and who will take over the organization of the Navigator Awards for this year. All right. Any final last questions, thoughts? Okay, thank you, thank you to everyone.
Thank you. We have to move. Make a motion, move to adjourn. Adjourn the meeting. Second.
Okay, roll call vote to adjourn. Carrie?
Yes.
Addie?
Yes.
Maureen? Kat?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, 8:25 PM. Thank you. All right.